So I appreciate your patience. I'd like to call this meeting of the Town Council to order. If you would please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Tonight, the council will be deliberating on the 2021 budget. We do have an item of public comment at the beginning here. If there's anybody that wants to address the council specifically or generally before we get started, please do so at this time. Seen a great rush towards, come on. Please state your name and address. Make sure the green light is showing brightly on the microphone so that we can hear you. And bring it closer.
I'm Alexandrina Pereira. I live at Two Heidi Lane, and I support the allocation of funds for sidewalks.
Okay.
I'm Jeffrey Burke. I live at Eight Men of U Lane, and I support the allocation for sidewalks.
Okay. Did you have anything else you wanted to add with respect to that?
No, thank you.
This is your chance. Okay. Do, am I right in understanding that you're on the school project to look into and study sidewalks?
Yes.
Okay. For what grade are you in?
Sophomore.
Sophomore? Okay. And this is for what class that you're doing this?
This is civics. Our teacher is Mr. Knight. This was part of our semester project.
Uh huh. And you studied sidewalks, or you just, what, why do you support the sidewalks? What's your thoughts behind it?
For our project, we were supposed to pick a project that was like in our community and tried to come up with a practical solution. We just, we found that a lot of people found that there were, there was not very walkable in Merrimack. There were not a lot of sidewalks. So we started looking into areas that we thought were, you know, vulnerable, that had a lot of foot traffic, but not a lot of sidewalks. We reached out to the community and talked to people about how they felt about the idea of having sidewalks. Like, do they support it? And there was a lot of positive feedback.
You got a lot of feedback on that? Did you have some specific areas that you were focusing on?
Yes, we were thinking about paving the area between the middle school and down Babusick Road and from the new homestead apartment complexes to the library. I posted about it on the Merrimack forum as part of my reaching out to the community. And like, I got a huge surge of positive feedback. People were like, yes, please pave that area. Like, they wanted to have their kids walk to the middle school, but they didn't feel like it was safe.
And the middle school is the, the one that's out in the center of town at the corner of the Lake Road and Meeting House? Madeleine Bennett. Okay. And you want a sidewalk from there to where?
Down Babusick Road.
All the way down to the, to where the J Mews is?
Yeah, to, yep, to 110 Babusick.
Okay. Great. Anything else you want to add?
No, thank you.
No? Good enough? Okay. Thanks a lot. We appreciate your input.
Thank you for having us.
Good job. Thank you.
Very good job. Thank you.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, there's students of Mr. Knight's class at Merrimack High School.
That's, that's, yeah, that's what she was pointing out.
Right. I just wanted to get Mr. Knight, give him a lot of credit for encouraging kids to pick a project and participate. So thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Is that Mr. Knight in the audience there?
That's Dad.
Dad. Good. All right. Well, thank you. Did a great job. Are there any other public comments? Seeing none, we'll move into our council deliberation. This is the point where we would make any adjustments or changes to the budget that we think is appropriate or necessary. And I'm guessing that what we want to do is go through department by department. Did you want to have anything to add, anything at the beginning here?
As I had said to you at the last meeting, when we were talking about adding money for the overtime for the firefighters, that Paul and I had come up with a list of cuts that you could make that would make that budget neutral. So we have those cuts, and I've incorporated them with something else, which is, I normally, at this time, propose a non-union pay increase. And so I am going to do that now, and I also have most of the money, except for maybe $20,000, to cover that as well for cuts. So my proposal, if you want to hear it, is that appropriate now? Is 2% pay increase as all the unions have received. And I would also like some extra money to, as you know, our non-union pay wage group has ranges of wages for our employees, but there's no way to move on that range like the unions do where they have steps and that kind of thing. So I would like to ask you for some additional money in that amount to, to adjust people's wages as I think that is appropriate, to keep them competitive and, and to reward good behavior, or, you know what I mean?
Good performance. Behavior is nice too, but performance and advancements and improvements and all that kind of stuff.
Thank you.
So you have something to pass out. Awesome. Do you want to speak to this and go through it at this point, or do you want to?
Sure. So, the, let's see. So we went over the, the adjustments that would be needed for the firefighter overtime. And there in, you can see them in 140, it's, it's under fire department overtime, 134,00518. And then there are benefits of 48,552. Is that right? And then we had, oh, the call EMS that was modified down, reduced because we were, we knew that we don't, we don't have 100% participation on all the overtime hours for the call EMS. So we attributed that to the fire overtime. So that's a negative $16,000. And then ambulance revenue, we increased that by 25,000. So now what, I'm jumping around because I'm talking about the fire overtime only. So the other things that are on here are incorporated in here for the raise. So, so it's the fire overtime, the benefits for fire, 48,000. The call EMS reduction, the increase of $25,000 in ambulance revenue. Is there anything else in there? No. All of these have to do with the firefighter overtime too? I should just shut up and let Paul do it. So anyway, so all of the things on the second page, the, the computer CRF, reduction of 15,000, ambulance CRF, 25,000, communications CRF, 25,000, DW highway CRF, 25,000, athletic fields, 10,000, and 5,000, G I S CRF. Now, just as I talk to you about them, these are all things that had been increased in my original budget, and now they're just being level funded. So it's not actually a decrease from this current year. It's a reduction of the increase. And so, and the other one was, had to do with compensated absences. So that's up at the, on the first page, 30,185. So I'm assuming if you added and subtracted all those, that you would come out to zero. So the other ones for the non-union raises, $98,000 for non-union raises. It's not attributed to any particular line. There's a whole bunch of lines. The Nashua Transit Increase had to be done. The, we removed the command vehicle from the, the chief's, or the assistant chief's command vehicle out of the fire department, which, you know, we've been talking about getting the police department to share more of their newer vehicles with the fire department. And we've come to the conclusion that we can pass some of the, you know, some of the newer vehicles over to the fire department for their command vehicles. And so I believe there's two of them that are going over right now. So the fire department roof, we've removed that from there because we believe that the number may be high, and even if it isn't high, we believe that we can do it within this year's, current year's budget. Vice Field Concession Stand and repairs, there's already money in there to do the basic repairs this year, this current year that we're in, and this was basically enhanced repairs. Cement mixer, we, Kyle offered that one up. Pressure washing for the public works facility. Basically, we're going to have it done professionally every cup, every two years, where they get into all the cracks and nooks and crannies and that kind of thing. And the library had already, as they had expressed, that they, they revised things and moved people around in various positions, and there was a savings of $7,900 there. We bumped up auto registrations in revenue because, again, they're tracking, still tracking really high. And we feel that we can accommodate another 25,000 barely. And I think that that is pretty much it for changes. Non-union raises go into wastewater and media because they're not, not unionized. Some of those people are not unionized. That's it?
Okay. Do we, does anybody have any questions with Eileen on these, Finley?
Eileen, did you speak to the motorcycle under police? I have it right here, but I have no.
I did not because I thought that somebody might, else might want to do that. I didn't want to take that.
Yeah, I.
Liberty.
Yeah. I, I asked you to put that on there, only because in light of hiring the two new officers, and I think about a list of priorities and the fact that our tax rate is going up 31 cents, that I think that that's not a priority need for the police department, as much as I can appreciate it and the presentation given. I, I think this year maybe we can do without it. It's a piece of equipment that I see that gets used very infrequently. And that, right now, it sounds like there's only two officers that are on the unit. I mean, it comes out for a couple parades. I think if we had to do, do away with something from the police budget, I think this year we can do that. I mean, I think about priorities for the police department, and I don't think my, a motorcycle is one of them. You know, I think moving forward, I mean, I'd love to hear more about some equipment that they could use, like a drone, a drone program and so forth like that. Not so much the motorcycle. There's nothing against it. I appreciate they're putting it in there. And there are a couple guys that like to ride it, but I'm requesting from the council that we take that from the police budget.
All right. We'll, we'll pick that up when we get into the police.
Okay.
Budget. We'll go through them one at a time, just to make sure we cover. Yes, Eileen?
So just, just for clarification, when you, if you add that $20,000 in, we're now at 31 cents even again.
I'm sorry. Say that again?
So we were.
We'll get there.
Okay. I just wanted to say that with our list and your $20,000, we're back at 31 cent increase.
Okay.
Okay. So if there are no questions specifically to this list that Eileen's talked about, let's, let's open up general government and, which is tab 01, and see if there's any other adjustments or changes or questions anybody has on that department.
Do you make a proposal to cut or, or add, or what are you, what are you looking for, Mr. Chairman?
Proposals to cut or add in general government. Any changes you want to make or think should be made?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I would move that the Town Council entertain on page 12 of general government, under 8104, under wages, the technology assistance position. It's technically the assistant technology coordinator's position plus the corresponding line for benefits. To, to cut it, to remove it. Sure.
It's a two-pronged question.
Sure.
One, can we actually make motions tonight, or is it just up for discussions?
This is the, this is our night to actually make changes.
It is to actually.
It would be motions to.
Okay, perfect.
To vote.
The second thing is, should we have the department head who's in charge of responding to what we're saying, so that we would understand if there's any ramifications? I mean, Bill's unfortunately the first one, but any future ones as well? Should they have the opportunity? Guess Finley has an opinion.
I'm just thinking, if we feel it's necessary at that point, I don't think.
Oh, if it's, okay.
There's a lot of information that we've kind of received on this, and that's just my thought.
Okay. But it would be okay if you'd want to do?
I would think.
Yeah.
It's up to Tom.
Witnesses. Don't stop. It was appropriate.
Oh, okay. So I, I need you to clarify what you're asking to do.
I'm asking that we not fund the assistant technology coordinator's position, which is listed as technology assistant on our, on our, in our budget books.
That's the new one, too, right?
Correct. We had the discussion on changing it from technology assistant to assistant technology coordinator.
If I remember correctly, they were going to have enhanced responsibilities, but it was also a prepping for.
Correct, because we've been advised at the last meeting that the technology coordinator will be retiring within the, within the immediate near future, which was the thought process behind that. My ration, my rationale for the, for not funding it is I think we need to take a more broader look as to how we're going to be managing our information technology department moving forward. We're moving, we have iCloud technology. I think for me, if we were to fund that position and hire that person, assuming, making the assumption that that technology coordinator position's going to be around for 12 to 18 months, you know, that new person's only going to have 12 to 18 months to get up and running. I would rather speak with somebody or put together a committee or, you know, task the information technology committee as to what the appropriate direction would be for, for our information, for our infrastructure, both in terms of the iCloud technology and the actual infrastructure in, in our, in our departments. I would, I just would like some more thought put into it as opposed to upgrading a position and calling it succession planning. I think there's a lot, there's a lot more at risk right now as it relates to cybersecurity that we ought to use this opportunity to not only address that, but also address our certain strengths and weaknesses as it relates to IT within our, within our departments. And I still don't have a second to my motion, Mr. Chairman, so. Thank you, Councilor.
Seconded by Barb.
So that's, that is my thought process behind that, Council Harrington.
May I respond?
Yes, please.
It's going to be a long night. Anyway, I disagree for the following reason. I think your rationale is right on the point. I think there's going to be a dramatic change in what IT is now. And it's evolving, and there's, what we're learning, it's, we won't recognize it five years from now. So whoever was in that position that we would get would have to have the wherewithal, the knowledge and the future vision to be able to guide us that way. So whether or not we fill the position now with that in mind, or do it 12 months from now, when someone retires, I think we're going to be in a catch-up mode if we wait. If we, in fact, keep what you're saying, vision for the future in mind when that person's selected, then that will put us in a position of being able to do exactly what you do without having to do a catch-up. That's my only thought.
Barbara?
Having been a application production support person in my life, as well as having lived with a IT position like this, I am somewhat agreeing with Councilor Boyd. What I would suggest, two things, maybe three, that we only fund it for a period of six months. In other words, start hiring the replacement at about the six-month pit time because what is written in the job description for qualifications and requirements, that is your basic position. Anyone coming into that position should be able to pick up on those things pretty quickly. Secondly, I would also say, even if you wanted to look at the future on whether you're outsourcing or not, you need to have some kind of ticket monitoring system. In other words, you start trouble tickets. Trouble tickets not only tell you the volume, it tells you the type of problems you're having, whether it's user error or whether it's application or cloud era, but it also allows you to identify opportunities to be able to educate your users more. So some of those calls that are ramming into the IT department every day and that have to be dropped off, maybe some of those can actually be taken care of with further education of the staff. So until you get that, you can't even go out to a, a vendor and say, help us look at what our future should be. Should we be outsourcing the IT or still maintaining it internally, until you have trouble tickets? That will be the first thing they tell you you need to do. Doesn't need to be fancy. Can be on an Excel spreadsheet. So I would suggest that rather than eliminate the entire position, go with a six-month funding period so that you have time to bring that person onboard, get them oriented for when the retirement does take place. Thank you.
Thanks. It is important to note that the position currently exists as an assistant for the technology coordinator. And by removing that, you're basically saying that we don't need that position, a second person in that group to, to be able to support the IT program in town. I disagree with that. I think we do need that person. Whether that person evolves into a higher level or something, I guess that's debatable, but I still agree with what was presented and where we're presently going as far as that's concerned. I think we need to fill this position. I think we need to have that security and that backup and that knowledge base in-house, in-plant at this point in time. Does anybody else have any suggestions? Eileen?
We haven't had anybody in that position for quite some time. So Chuck is running around trying to do everything himself right now. So that proposal would mean that he would be by himself for another, you know, at least a total of a whole year, at least. So we do have trouble tickets. It's not as, you know, I mean, all, all of those things are done and logged. Chuck does work with individuals and departments to teach them what they need to know. Just for your, I, I really like Nancy's idea, having to do with hiring somebody and when that person potentially took over, that they could evaluate the whole idea whether or not we want to outsource it, but there's no doubt in my mind that we definitely need a person here. We're open 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. We have 10 different locations, nine of which have staff, 175 PCs, 21 servers, 20 tablets, 14 copiers, 150 phones, and at least 20 different complicated proprietary software packages. So they also have to deal with the election. There are three polling places, laptops, printers, routers, switchers, et cetera. And being without a person for even the period of time that we have not had anyone has been very, very difficult. So I respectfully disagree.
Rita, did you have something?
Tom, I'm in agreement with you, and I, and Eileen just, I think, spelled it out clearly. And I'm concerned, and I, I can appreciate the thoughts of outsourcing and saving money. And maybe down the line, if we want to look at outsourcing at some other point, but I don't think this is the time now. I've, I've watched Chuck do his work personally, my experience, and the guy is busy. And when he had an assistant that helped him, I mean, you're dealing with a lot of folks. At one point, it was myself included, who are not that computer savvy, and we have problems all the time. So he could, he's running from department to department and trying to take, take, you know, handle all the overwhelming issues as well, or the overall issues, I should say. So I, I agree with the town manager. I agree with Tom. I think that my position is that, or my opinion is that should stay in the budget, that position. Thank you.
Any other comments? So we have a motion to remove the technology coordinator assistant, technology assistant position from the budget for $51,168. I'll call for a vote on that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Nay. That goes down six to 1-0. Any abstaining? Everybody raised their hand, so. We're back to the general government budget as presented. I'm going to assume that we should at this point add in or subtract the numbers that Eileen's presented on hers for general budget. Can I get a motion to?
So moved, Mr. Chairman?
Moved by Bill and seconded by Nancy to include the non-union raise amount of 98,371 to reduce the compensated absences by $30,185 and increase the Nashua Transit Line 8405 by $6,321. Any comments or suggestions on that motion? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstaining? That passes 7-0-0. Any other adjustments or changes to the general government tab of the budget? Seeing none? We'll, we'll move along to assessing, which is tab two. Eileen, didn't have any changes in the assessing department. Are there any other changes or questions that people have relative to the assessing department?
Except the non-union, right?
Well, those are going to be all incorporated within the general government one.
Okay.
I mean, she put it all under the, the variable of general government.
Yeah, okay, I get you.
But yeah, that definitely is there. Any other adjustments or changes for assessing? Seeing none, we'll move on to fire. We'll just have number three. Nancy?
Okay, I have a couple of questions about the fire. First of all, is it my understanding that we have, in the CIP for next year, we have an engine?
Yes, we do.
Okay. What, do you happen to have it there? I should have brought it. What is the CIP amount that we're saving up for, and how much do we have in the capital reserve funds?
At this time, we have approximately $600,000 available to spend.
In the, in the CIP?
And the CIP is 600,000.
Okay, well, this makes it easy for me. I would like to make a motion to.
I mean, go ahead and say your motion, but there is a pumper truck in the budget. Are you trying to get it earlier than this budget?
The one that was scheduled for next year. I won't. The one that was scheduled for next year. I want it in the present budget, since we have the money.
What's not really in the budget?
Can't make a motion.
Because it's not on the agenda. You can make a suggestion.
I would like to make a suggestion, but Bill made a motion.
Well, you can make a motion to remove this from this budget, but you can't make a motion to spend the money for this issue.
Okay, well, in the future, I would like to be able to make a motion, just to let everyone know.
To put it on the agenda, right?
So we can put it on the agenda, because we have to have a public hearing, right?
Yeah.
Okay. See, now that we all know what we're doing.
Talking about chicken and raisin.
Because it doesn't, if we have the money already, and it's gonna take, I don't know how long it takes for a fire truck to be delivered once it's ordered, can we ask that, can we ask that question of the fire chief? Approximately?
Or his assistant, yeah.
Or his assistant?
Six to nine months.
Okay, so once it's ordered, it's six to nine months before it's delivered. So in my opinion, it's, in my opinion, it's a why not. We've got the money, cash already saved up. We're in the need, we've been hearing issues about engines needing to be replaced and such. We've got the money already saved up, and it's gonna be 69 months before we get it. In my opinion, we might as well just order it.
And in the future, I'll support that, because I agree with you.
So what you're, what you're getting around to suggesting is that we remove the $599,000 from pumper truck under 8910 capital reserve fund purchases, which will also pull $599,000 out of the revenue from the capital reserve fund, so it'll be a net balance zero as far as the budget is concerned, tax-wise.
Yes. The only thing is, I just, I hate to have you remove it and then not have the votes to spend it this year. It's just, you know...
You can leave it in there, and we can, and...
Why don't you just leave, why don't you leave it in there and wait till the motion?
For the motion.
Because you can always make, you can always do it later.
Okay.
Is that okay?
It's fine with me. It's your meeting.
I'm willing to, is there any other consequences that I haven't thought of, though? No, okay. That was my overriding. And I think, you know, we've talked about the overtime that resolves some of that issue, at least for a year. We're gonna have to revisit this for next year, but this also addresses a more urgent need for equipment as well, and it's like, why not? Thank you for the information, by the way. That's all I have.
So, does anybody else have any changes to the fire department, above and beyond what Eileen has presented on her list, which we'll get to in just a minute? Seeing none, I presume we want to move forward with the list that Eileen provided for us? If not, if yes or no, we need a motion to...
Mr. Chairman, move the town manager's budget adjustments for the fire department, section 03 in the town budget.
Okay. Is there a second? Seconded by Finley. Moved by Bill and seconded by Finley to make the adjustments to overtime 8111, a plus...
Oh, you were doing what?
I was gonna just say that you need to be specific, and you are already doing it. Sorry.
Thank you. To increase the overtime 8111 by $134,518, there are variable benefits that are associated with that, a $48,552 increase. To reduce the call EMS 8107 line by $16,679, and increase the ambulance revenue expectation by $25,000. Now, the question that I have then is on the command vehicle and the roof. The roof was part of your recommendations in general. So 8502, the roof, we believe we might be able to do that in this year's budget, and so we're taking it out of next year's budget.
Yes, and also the command vehicle is, comes out of revenue as well, right?
Comes out of both revenue and expenditures.
But, but not the roof?
Not the roof.
Not the roof. So just the, the command vehicle is coming out of the, the fire department capital, the fire equipment capital reserve fund, so remove that from the expenditures and the revenue. But the, the roof just gets removed from the expenditures because it's in the general fund budget. And as I said, the reason why I was doing it is because we believe we can get that done through this year's budget.
So the discussion, I, and maybe I misheard it, but the discussion regarding the police vehicles going over the fire, and those would cover the cost of the command, is command vehicle?
Well, there's no cost involved in transferring an old police fire, police vehicle to the fire department.
Okay, and I guess the other, the only other question is the vehicles themselves, but the outfit costs. Is there an outfit cost? Are we transferring?
Yeah.
Or a paint?
That's a good point.
It's $5,000 to paint two crews. It's about $6,000 to paint one.
And?
That's it, really.
And do you want them to add $6,000?
No, they don't need to do it. We got enough money in the budget for that.
Are you comfortable with that?
I didn't hear a word they said.
They feel like they have it covered in the, in the current budget to be able to...
It's probably in the, in the various lines in, in Public Works where they do repairs and maintenance, that we believe that we would have enough money to do the outfit for those.
Okay. Thank you.
Barbara?
Yes, so what was the change to the call EMS?
When, the, as you know, it was very complicated. We had 100% of the time allocated as though EMS attendants would be there every day from eight to midnight, and it was budgeted at that amount. We found that only 70% of the time, they were actually filling those. So what we did is we took that 30% of the time out, and we had the fire department firefighters and put that into their overtime, because they would be filling those positions that the, that the EMS attendants would not be filling.
So the actual number doesn't really change, you're just moving it out of one category into the other?
Sort of, kind of, because the pay, the pays are completely different.
Yeah.
You know, firefighter overtime is completely different than the other thing, but yes, theoretically, yes.
The net effect for hours of coverage is the same. So I don't know if I was overly clear, but the numbers listed here in this list, I've mentioned them all, but, and the command vehicle coming out of 8910, $40,000 out of appropriations and $40,000 out of revenues. Any other questions on the fire department adjustments recommended by the town manager? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote on that. That was moved by Bill and seconded by Finley. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? That passes 7-0-0. Which brings us to the police department. Do we want to suggest that we're not gonna come back and revisit any of these, or do you want to keep that open as a possibility as we go on tonight?
What do you mean?
Well, you know, like in our town meetings, we, we do something that allows us, that keeps us from being able to go back and revisit one articles after they've been discussed.
Oh, what's that, that's called?
If our fire department doesn't need to stay here, I don't want to have them, you know, anybody that...
They don't want to leave.
Reconsideration.
Up to you guys whether you want to reconsider it or not. I mean, it's, just thought I would try to give them a little bit of a break if there's...
I met with them today, and they couldn't wait to be here. They want to stay all night. Look at them with the smiling faces, huh?
The people who are gonna be last and the last to say, "You better make that stay."
And I apologize for those that are in the higher numbers of the CIR, but I was trying to be nice. It just didn't work.
We just didn't allow you to.
Okay, so, police department. This is where we can make the adjustment that you're talking about.
I moved that under line item 8503 vehicles, that we remove the $20,000 for the motorcycle.
Am I getting it clicking? Is your mic on? Just out of curiosity.
Sorry. Want me to repeat it?
Please.
Under line item 8503, I'd make a motion that we remove the $20,000 for the motorcycle.
It was moved by Peter and seconded by Bill, actually, but just because he said it the first time. Do you want to talk to that any further, or did you cover that already?
No, I think I said my piece on it. You know, I don't like to remove anything, but I think that this year with the two police officers, you know, I think we need to, something sacrificed, that's a sacrifice I think we can make, so.
Anybody else have any comments or suggestions on that? I, I can't argue with you. I hate to pull it out. I think it's a nice thing to be able to have, but on the other hand, there are a lot of increases in this budget, and it probably is something that, if it's only used seldom, if it's not necessarily needed in order to, to serve the people of the town directly, I think maybe delaying it a year is a good idea at this point. Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote to remove the, how much was it? 20?
$20,000, Mr. Chairman.
$20,000 from 8503?
That's correct.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? That passes 7-0-0. Eileen didn't have any other suggestions there. Communications, I'm assuming that's it. Does anybody else have questions on police? Seeing none. We'll move to communications. Anybody have any comments or suggestions on the communications line? Seeing, Eileen?
I just wanted to mention something. We, I had texted all of you today, and I just wanted to say that we're very pleased to announce that we, both of the outstanding contracts, the police department and the, the police union, and the dispatchers and secretaries at the, at the police department have all agreed to multi-year contracts. So that's very good. That was a very good thing.
We'll be discussing those at our next meeting, or?
Yes.
February 6th meeting, that special meeting that is our last day to be able to talk about...
That's right, yeah.
Things prior to the balloting, so we'll get that to look forward to. Seeing nothing else in communications, we'll move on to code enforcement. Anybody have any suggestions in code enforcement? Seeing none, we'll move on to Public Works Department? There's gotta be something in here. Just, just kidding. Any changes in the Public Works Department? Seeing none?
Isn't it DPW admin? Or are you talking all of Public Works?
Admin. Line 07. We'll move on to 08 Highway? Do I need to be calling out our, our numbers in each of those departments? We'll just leave them, you've covered all that at the end. Thank you. Because we don't have them all summed up for all of them. So Highway, 08, any changes in the Highway Department? Now that they have their new garage? Seeing none?
Just a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Eileen raised her hand, so.
I get the cement mixer and the vice field.
I wasn't seeing that. You're right. So I need a motion to reduce the budget for those two departments, those two lines?
Seconded.
Moved by Nancy and seconded by Bill to remove, out of 8371, the vice field concession stand repairs for $10,000, and out of 8508, the cement mixer for $4,000. The what? Cement or cement? One of those.
It's cement or cement.
Cement.
Really? Really?
Well, is there a... You make fun of my New England accent. I can make fun of you.
Okay.
Smart pants.
Vice field concession stand repairs, are we, are we managing it like this year or something, or is there just not the demand that we thought? There's actually money in this year's budget to do the major, the major repairs. This extra money was just in case. We, we ran into some issues with that vice field concession repairs, so we're gonna do the major repairs, and if, if we need to do more, we, we have money in our budgets to be able to do that. Peter?
I guess I look at this, and I'm almost, I feel like this is an MYA responsibility. Maybe I'm wrong on that.
Except we own the property.
I'm sorry, Nancy?
I'm sorry, I shouldn't speak out. Except we own the property.
It's our building.
We own the building.
Yeah, and I get it, but the profits from that concession stand, rightfully so, go to the kids and stuff, and I get that. I just...
I understand.
You know? I mean, is it falling down? I think, I look at $10,000, and I think, wow, is it being ready to fall apart?
Laurie, speak? So for vice, we do the joint loss committee meeting every year. They do a review of it, and we found the roof has, needs some major repairs. There's some animal damage. They're eating at the wood that needs to be repaired. It needs to be chipped and painted. It also has some issues with the stairwell. There were some not-so-safe fixes that were made in the past that need to be corrected. There's also venting in the concession stand that needs to be fixed.
So are we leaving ourselves open for a liability issue by not doing this?
We're going to be doing it.
We're gonna get it done now instead of wait.
Okay, sorry.
It's, it's already in this year's budget. So we, we put some extra money in next year's, so this current year that we're in, right at this very moment, there's money in there, and we're planning on repairing it. We put an extra $10,000 in case we found that there was, was additional needed to be done.
Thanks, Laurie.
Thank you, Laurie. Any other questions? We call for a vote?
Yeah, I actually, I had a question.
Go ahead, Bill. We're on this motion for the 10 and the 4,000.
I apologize. Make complete the motion.
That's fine. So we'll call for a vote on the motion to remove the 10 and the 4,000 from 8371 and 8508 in the 08 line item. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining, that passes 7-0-0. Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Either Eileen or Paul on page 66, 8341, understand and salt. How are we doing so far? I know you increased the allocation by about $5,000. Sorry, Laurie, I should have.
So far this year?
Yes.
We're at about 65% of our budget.
Okay.
We increased that to add some liquid calcium. We're going to get a new tank, because when we moved our old one, it cracked.
Right.
It was from 1985, so it cracked. We're gonna replace that, and we need to fill it. So that's what that extra $5,000 is.
Okay. The, the, the question that I was trying to get at was more towards currently, as it relates with this year's budget, like you said, we're on target that you're not gonna, in, in other words, the allocation that's being, that you recommended, that the town manager's agreeing with you, is, is mirroring, like you're having no problems with this year's budget, so it reflects a trend that should carry over into next year's budget?
Yep, absolutely.
In terms of how we're using sand and salt on our roads?
Yep, that's been our average.
Okay, perfect. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Eileen?
The council should also know that we make a point of filling up the salt shed at the end of the, before the end of the year, so that we're, you know, we're kind of almost a year ahead on the salt, or at least prepared to go for the next year.
Right. Okay.
Okay.
Do, the, the capital reserve fund deposits, do we need to be going over these as we go through each of these departments, or should we just take them all at the end? Take them all to the end, because you have the numbers, so we can get at them. Okay. So are there any other comments or questions on tab eight, Highway? Seeing none, we'll move along to solid waste. Tab nine.
If you don't mind, before you move on, I noticed Kyle's comment on the asphalt pile recycling. If it's, he has a, just a note that it's, it's an annual request, but this could be a recommended cut if necessary. but this could be a recommended cut if necessary. I know he said they use it for backing up the shoulders, so I just wanted to have that as an outlier for conversation if necessary at the end.
What, what number is that, Finley?
It's eighty-three fifty-nine outside services.
Under oh eight or oh nine?
Oh, eight.
Oh, eight, eighty-three fifty-nine.
If I recall correctly, when we talked about it, they said they were kinda needed that piled crushed cause they needed to use those materials.
Oh, no, I recognize that, but his note in here was that, you know, if something had to go, that's something that could be contemplated. I don't know, that might not still hold true, so.
That, that, that has changed since September.
Okay. Never mind.
Okay. So we'll move on to oh nine.
We have the, um.
Pardon?
Is this solid waste?
We're on solid waste.
Okay, we have some here for the pressure washing.
Yes, we do. Would you like to make that motion?
I'd like to make the motion to omit the, decrease the appropriations for eighty-three fifty-nine by three thousand dollars pressure wash.
Second.
Seconded by Barb, made by, motion made by Nancy to remove the three thousand dollars from the eighty-three fifty-nine line for pressure washing. Uh, any other comments? Seeing none, take a vote. Anybody, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? That passes seven zero zero. Anything else under solid waste? Seeing none, we'll move on to equipment maintenance. I don't even know where equipment maintenance, sixteen? Now we're getting out of order, messing me up.
Yeah, we are getting.
Oh, keep Kyle together.
Ah.
You gotta feel special now, right, being kept together by Paul?
He's so courteous.
So, keeping Kyle together. Equipment maintenance, any, any suggestions on equipment maintenance? That seems like a pretty tight budget to me, but.
Extremely.
Seeing none, we'll move on to building and grounds. Seventeen, thank you. Any, any suggested changes for building and grounds?
Where's the, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Where's the line item in here in terms of, at town hall? I know that, I don't like to use names, but Phil does a dynamite job of, with the flowers and the mulching and, do we, do we allocate funds for him to go out and, to, to beautify and if so, where's it located in here?
Eighty-three twenty-two.
Is it eighty-three twenty-one?
Maintenance grounds, twenty-two. Maintenance ground.
Under maintenance supplies?
Yeah, flowers.
That's what we call flowers and, oh, right there, down there. Okay. Okay. Okay, the amount's been static, so, okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions on building and grounds? Peter?
Under the eighty-five oh two buildings, the LED upgrade of town hall buildings includes ambulance garage and Abbey Griffin Park. Could we do that? Does it all have to be done this year or could we do it in a piecemeal fashion? And maybe finish up the rest next year, you know, cut that budget in half or to twenty thousand? And then do part of it and then finish it off. Is that a, would that be a problem?
Eileen?
It wouldn't, except it's coming out of capital res, it's coming out of the fund balance. It's on your fund balance list, so if you took it out, you'd have to take the revenue out also.
Okay, alright. Thank you.
Barb?
Yeah, getting back to, um, maintenance grounds, eight-three-two-two. Does that also include the work at the O'Leary Center that we said we were gonna do? Remember we, they came to us and said the grounds?
It was already included in it.
Okay, you think so?
That's what you meant?
Yeah, it's already included in those numbers.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions on building and grounds? Seeing none. We've made no changes, we'll move on. That brings us back to Parks and Rec line thirteen. So you're all together. Are there any suggestions on Parks and Rec? I don't want anybody to feel rushed. Seeing none, we'll move on to library. Anybody have any questions or comments on library? There is a line on Eileen's list.
Salary, salary saves like I make, that doesn't have a number though.
Well, because it's variable, but it was things that they had given to. Eileen?
What would it be? Oh, yeah, but I'm talking about the number on the budget.
Oh, you can just say, um, just like you did with the non-union raises, you can just say that, that particular department and we'll, we'll make the adjustments. Or the library will make theirs.
Salary adjustments for the library made as suggested by the town manager of seventy-nine sixty?
Motion reduced by seven thousand nine hundred sixty.
Yeah, that too.
Made by Nancy, seconded by Finley? Okay, did you wanna talk to it?
No, I think it's a reasonable suggestion. It was, it's a, of course, actually.
Brought up by the trustees.
It's themselves.
Did anybody have any other comments on that? We'll call for a vote. All those in favor of reducing the salaries lines variable in library by seven thousand nine hundred sixty dollars signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? That passes seven zero zero. Any other changes to library or questions, since Yvette is here, she could answer, I'm like, sure. But she's not wanting to, I'm sure. Seeing none, we'll move on to community development. Which is way, um, somewhere in there, yeah, twenty-one. Any comments or suggestions on community development? Eileen went through and did a great job for us here, so.
She sure did.
And Paul?
And, well, our, yes.
And Paul.
Eileen, Paul and all of her department heads, um, cause I'm sure some of them had serious inputs.
Yes.
So thank you very much for that effort. Any, any, no comments on community development? We'll move on to Town Clerk Tax Collector. Which is twenty-four. Again, a, a tight budget.
Pretty tight.
They do a great job. They're the face of the town in so many ways.
I agree.
We appreciate the work they do.
Do we?
Yes?
Do we need to have a motion to increase the auto registrations?
No, that's.
It's in revenue. Do you wanna do that as a revenue later on or? While we're here with, with Town Clerk Tax Collector, so are you making a motion?
Some of.
Seconded.
Moved by Barbara and seconded by Bill to increase the auto registration revenue line by twenty-five thousand dollars. Any comments or suggestions? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? That passes seven zero zero. Bringing us to welfare, which is twenty-five. Seems like when welfare was being presented, there were some questions on, somebody hadn't gotten any inputs in. Are we still comfortable with the numbers where they are?
That was, uh, we added that in general government. That's the national transit that you already voted on. It's included in general government line.
That always goes in general government, right?
Correct.
Okay.
We, we asked Pat to answer. That's probably why you, we're thinking it was in this one.
Okay.
So we had, asked Pat Murphy and she was the one that addressed it.
Okay. So are you good? Any other questions or comments on the welfare department line? Seeing none, we'll move on to debt services. Twenty-seven. So we still have several long-term debts that we're working on? Can you, can you just summarize again for us, Paul, where we're at, or Eileen?
So we have, um, we just lost one, right? We lost the two hundred and seventy thousand dollar one that we had. You see seventeen eighteen, we lost that. In nineteen twenty and then, um, we had the, the only one that's left is, there's, there's one other one left as well as the highway garage one. So drainage improvements is still left. How many years is left on that, do you remember?
Twenty twenty-three.
Twenty twenty-three, that one, the one that says drainage improvements, which shows, um.
Interest going down fast.
Interest and principal. So it's a hundred and forty thousand dollars for principal and seven thousand one seventy-five for interest. And then you see your first, uh, your second half year of interest on your bond for the highway and first principal payment. Is that right? Second principal pay, second, sorry, second principal payment. Should've let Paul do it.
We have two bonds outstanding.
Okay, and we also.
In the general fund, we have two bonds outstanding, still.
That's what I wanted to know.
And one's gonna retire in twenty-three.
Yeah.
Twenty-two, twenty-three.
So also in this tab is the wastewater treatment fund debt service. Do we talk about that now? Or do we just accept that this budget is what it is? Or do we need to revisit this when we get to wastewater?
There is a separate line, if you're talking about the, uh,
Thirty-one dash twenty-seven.
Yeah, there is a, um, separate line for that wastewater treatment bond that they're proposing. We try to break it out into general fund and wastewater. So if you just wanna continue with general fund, that'd be great.
Okay, so twenty-seven debt service, the total comes to thirty-one million, six hundred eighty-two thousand, four hundred fifty-two. Well, that's, okay, wait a minute, I went all the way down to the sum total of the year or something. So the debt service is four fifteen thirty-six.
That's right, yes.
Okay.
Right, that's the bottom.
Any other questions on debt service at this point? Seeing none, should we move down to the wastewater since we're standing right here? Looks like the, I don't know what numbers to say here, but anyway, are there any questions on the wastewater treatment fund debt service?
That's all on thirty-one.
Yeah, but it's on page twenty-seven or tab twenty-seven debt services, so.
For you.
In my sheet it is.
But not on us.
You have a thirty-one tab?
Yes. We have a thirty-one tab, that's correct, separate.
Okay.
It's right at the back of this, right here.
So if there's no questions on it, we'll go forward.
So does everybody know where that is?
It's on, um.
What page?
Okay, it's on page one twenty-three.
We have a sewer fund of seven eighty-eight, two ninety-five. And the general fund, we talked about it, four fifteen oh thirty-six.
Yep.
Sewer fund debt, yes.
That's on.
Right.
One twenty-three of the books.
Okay. So we're good with that, we'll move forward. So Paul, you wanna give us an idea of where we are as far as adjustments are concerned at this point? I, I think we just took another twenty thousand out of the appropriations.
We're right now, the tax rate is thirty-one cents higher than last year at five dollars and two cents. We increased, because we haven't voted on the capital reserves, right now we increased, uh, the general gar, the general fund one hundred and seven, three forty-nine in appropriations and we increased revenues by, net at ten thousand dollars. So right now, adding that in and then the other adjustments, we'd be at five dollars and two cents.
Okay, thank you. So now we can go into the wastewater tab, which is ten?
Thirty-one.
Hmm?
Thirty-one in the books.
Thirty-one in the books?
Yeah.
Ten on the spreadsheet. Numbers are numbers, I guess. Does anybody have any comments or questions on wastewater? Because it's not part of the, um, the general government, it's in one of the, uh,
Enterprise.
Enterprise funds. There's a non-union wage increase here listed, which is part of the two percent recommendation of forty-one thirty-six and it also shows up in revenues because it's paid for by the enterprise fund. Do we need to vote to add that into the budget?
Some of, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made by Bill and seconded by Barb to add the four thousand one hundred thirty-six dollars into the appropriations and into the revenues of the wastewater fund for non-union wage increases. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstaining? That passes seven zero zero. Any other comments or suggestions on the wastewater budget? Seeing, seeing and hearing none, since I didn't see any. Media budget, which is thirty-two, tab wise. Any, um.
Just the non-union, right?
Right.
I'd like to make that motion to increase the appropriation for non-union wages. Thirty-two oh nine as well as the revenue thirty-two oh nine.
Seconded.
Motion made by Nancy and seconded by Bill. Any other comments? Call, call a question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Seven zero zero. Any other comments on media at this time? Seeing none, that brings us down to the fire protection budget. Which is line thirty-three. Ninety-three thousand, two hundred sixty-three dollars. Seeing nothing. Police outside detail budget or?
Outside detail, please. Twenty in your spreadsheet.
Twenty in the spreadsheets.
Oh, yeah?
Yes, below fire.
It's what?
It's right below fire. There's two separate breaks. There's a fire break and a police break in there.
And there's a fire protection other or?
No.
Okay.
Tab twenty?
I'm going back there. No, I'm not. I didn't find it.
Did Finley find it? Finley? Is that what they call it now? And Finley's gonna be teaching you about technology.
Sorry.
Oh, please.
You just, you just got rid of a BlackBerry. It was a pink phone with little sparkles on it.
It was a long time ago. So outside details, twenty, there it is. Self-supporting fund? Because those are revenues that we charge, um, people to pay for, right?
Right, they're self-supporting funds.
Right. And it's going up a little bit this year, but not much. That's based on historical or is there just expectations of how much we might end up getting?
That's based on a calculation of, uh, an average of people who can do the details in the police department plus administration charge on top of it and that's where we come up with that number and the rate increased just a smidgen to increase it by, I think it was less than.
It's, yeah, it's, it's twelve percent, twelve thousand dollars.
It's, yeah, it's, it's twelve percent, twelve thousand dollars or something like that.
Yeah, twelve thousand dollars, so the, the rate went up, the average rate went up across board, and then the five percent of administration fee on top.
Okay, and if we, if we get more requests than that, are we going to run into a budgeting limit, or?
We look at it as, as an overall budget, we cannot overspend our bottom-line appropriation, and depending if there's savings and appropriations and other avenues, because it's self-supporting, we would go ahead and do it, if not, we tell them we can't do the detail.
They'd have to hire outside people or something.
They would have to go to another agency, police, state police, or one of the other local agencies around us.
Okay. Any other questions, Peter?
Paul, more, more of a curiosity question, but we're going into, you know, the primaries coming up, and then we're going into a presidential election year, and as has happened in the past, presidents come through, we have to provide security for them, does that money come out of our, and we don't get reimbursed for that, does that money come out of the Police Overtime Budget, or would it come out of this line?
We try to bill them, but as you know, they don't, they tell us we got to cover it, so it would probably come out of Police Overtime Budget, it'd come out of the Police Overtime Budget, fine items.
Let's not invite any. Nobody.
Nobody.
And it's been tried in the past to get the money back, and? No.
Pete's always on duty, because every time there's a presidential candidate, he's sitting right next to him, so.
Not true.
At least twice it was.
Okay, so Police Outside Detail Budget is set at four-thirty-one, four-sixty-five. The Fire Outside Detail, which is here also, or is?
EMS.
Outside Details EMS Coverage, twelve thousand, sixty-eight dollars, any questions? Seeing none. Library? This must be the trustees' funds?
Yeah, that's the trustees' funds.
Okay. For eleven thousand dollars.
That's right, too, that's their contribution, that's right.
So that brings us to the bottom of your page here for grand total for warrant?
Yep, the, right now the warrant will read thirty-five million, nine-hundred-and-forty-eight-thousand, one-hundred-and-four dollars.
Is that a separate bond?
No, the bond's a separate warrant article, this is just your, your, your budget warrant article.
That's before.
And the Capital Reserve Fund deposits are special items on the warrant as well.
Special, yes.
Okay, so that's where, if I, in the future with my motion, it would be under that, it wouldn't be under this. It would be under a warrant.
No, it would have to be underneath this, okay.
Paul has just given you the total with everything, as, we're not really sure what the state's going to make us do this year as far as Capital Reserve Funds, but that includes it.
The withdrawals.
The thirty-five million includes the withdrawals.
The withdrawals.
Yeah. The thirty-five million includes withdrawals from Capital Reserve. Yeah.
Okay. Deposits we're going to talk about in just a minute. Okay.
Do we know when they're going to give us instruction on that?
I actually plan on going up next week and sitting down with, at least the person in charge of setting the tax rate, and our individual they have, because I want to talk to them about this stuff, I've been holding off to see where we stand within the budget process before I go up there, so hopefully next week I will, I'll be sitting at their door until they talk to me.
Yeah, they got to get it to us so we can print ballots, right?
Well, that, and I got to get other information to everybody.
Oh yeah, oh yeah.
So. They might move me across the road to the hospital, but I'm going to sit up there until they talk to me.
I'll be his bodyguard.
We hope that's not necessary.
And if the budget is approved, the tax rate will be set at what per thousand?
Five-oh-two.
Five-oh-two, and that's a thirty-one cent increase?
Okay. The, the revolving fund they're using for Parks and Rec, we don't have to deal with that as part of our budget, right? Because that's a self-funded.
Self-funded outside of it.
Thing. Okay. Any other questions at this point? We'll go to page two. For Capital Reserve Fund Deposits, General Fund? I don't even know, is that in the budget, or it's just spread out through each of the departments?
It's throughout the budget.
Throughout the budgets, is this one million, nine-hundred-and-twenty thousand?
Do you have that information, Paul?
And then these reductions are what you're recommending, so we come up with a revised number of one million, eight-hundred-and-fifteen thousand?
Correct.
Okay. So right now, the budget through all of these departments, oh-one, eighty-five, ten, oh-three, eighty-five, ten, oh-five, eighty-five, ten, oh-eight, thirteen, and twenty-one, includes the numbers listed here in there for Capital Reserve Fund Deposits, so that it all adds up to one-point-nine-two million. Eileen is suggesting that we reduce it by these amounts, which will level fund the Capital Reserve Fund Deposits from this year to next year.
Can, can I just say something?
Please.
It's still incre, the, the Capital Reserve Fund. No, some, some of them are level, and some of them have increased, so like fire, fire equipment, we have an extra seventy-five thousand dollars in there and that kind of thing, so we wanted to, we, what my point really was, is that we were, we had added, and we were now subtracting that, but there are still some increases in those to account for the cost of equipment going up over the years, so there is some increases, but mostly inflationary.
So we need a motion to pull these numbers out of those lines?
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion made by Nancy, seconded by Bill.
Do we need to read these out?
Yeah.
Okay.
You want to do it? Go ahead.
Okay, zero-one, eight-five-one-zero, Computer Capital Reserve Fund, decrease of fifteen thousand.
By fifteen thousand.
By fifteen thousand. Go right ahead. Oh-three, eight-five-one-zero, Ambulance Capital Reserve Fund, decrease of twenty-five thousand. Zero-five, eight-five-one-zero, Communications CRF, decrease of twenty-five thousand. Zero-eight, eight-five-one-zero, DW Highway CRF, decrease of twenty-five thousand. Thirteen, eight-five-one-zero, Athletic Field CRF, ten thousand, decrease of ten thousand, and twenty-one, eight-five-one-zero, GIS CRF, decrease of five thousand, for a total of decrease one thousand, one-hundred-and-five thousand dollars.
One-hundred-and-five thousand dollar decrease out of the Capital Reserve Fund.
Yes.
Motion was made by Nancy, seconded by Bill, to make those changes. Any, any other comments or questions? The ambulance, we actually have a minimum, we have to be putting in the ambulance capital reserve, but we're way over that, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, I think the minimum is twenty-five or forty, or something like that?
I believe it's like twelve thousand.
Oh, twelve, okay.
Twelve, but right now.
And we're at a hundred and something.
Ambulance will be at a hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, good.
Why do we have to do that?
We have a, there was a warrant article many, many, many years ago, saying that we would fund the ambulance fund by at least twelve thousand, five hundred dollars, or some number like that.
Heard that before.
Every year, and so, unless somebody wants to put a warrant article to change that, we're well over that number, so I just wanted to make sure we stayed up there, and we weren't going to get a response from, from anybody about that. So the motion is to remove a hundred and five thousand from the Capital Reserve Fund Deposits, as delineated. If there are no other questions, I'll call a question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining, seven zero zero. So our revised General Fund Capital Reserve Fund Deposits is one-point-eight-one-five million. The Capital Reserve Fund Deposit for Waste Water Treatment Fund is set at five hundred thousand. Any questions on that? And the Waste Water Treatment Fund Bond?
That's phase four.
Pardon?
That's phase four.
Phase four, phase three and a half, phase four. Are we, are we discussing that now, or, because we have to put this on as a warrant article, right?
That is correct.
When, when are we going to be discussing that, on the sixth?
The public hearing is February thirteenth, for the budget, so we'll discuss it again then.
Okay.
But you could probably also do it on the night that you ratify the contracts if you so choose.
Yeah, they can, we can.
We can talk about it then, or whatever, but anyway, the, the amount in the Waste Water Treatment Fund Bond for the next, for the rest of the phase three, for phase four, or whatever you want to call it, nine million, five-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars, we're going to be putting that forward as a bond article, and hopefully we get two-thirds to pass that. Which brings us to our total appropriation, all funds of.
Forty-seven million, seven-hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand, one-hundred-and-four dollars. One-hundred-and-four. Yes, that includes everything.
Includes everything.
Everything, bonds, everything.
Right. That we, that we talked about so far, and what we haven't talked about, obviously, are the union contracts that you mentioned that we'll be reviewing.
On the sixth.
And they would be in addition to this, as a separate warrant article.
Right.
Two, two of them, obviously. Any other comments or suggestions, Paul?
Mr. Chairman, if you could please bear with me, I need some votes from the council, so I can start getting a warrant put together. If I can have a motion to move thirty-five million, nine-hundred-and-forty-eight-thousand, one-hundred-and-four dollars for the operating budget warrant?
So moved.
Moved by Bill and seconded by Barbara, to move the operating warrant of thirty-five million, nine-hundred-and-forty-eight-thousand, one-hundred-and-four dollars. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining, seven zero zero.
If I can have a motion to move one million, eight-hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars for General Fund Capital Reserve Fund Deposits.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Bill, seconded by Nancy, for one-point-eight-one-five million for General Fund Capital Reserve Fund Deposits. Everybody understand that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstaining, that passes seven zero zero.
If I can have a motion for five hundred thousand dollars for deposits into Waste Water Treatment Capital Reserve Fund?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Bill, seconded by Lon, to move five hundred thousand dollars into the Capital Reserve Fund for Waste Water Treatment Fund. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstaining, seven zero zero.
And the last one, if I could have nine million, five-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars for Waste Water Treatment Bond, phase four, phase five, for the upgrades to the plant?
So moved.
Moved by Bill.
Second.
Seconded by Barb, Finley. Have we talked about the interest rates expected on that, or anything, or do we need to discuss?
We will discuss all that during, during the public hearing, I'm just trying to get it moved to, oh, document for the public hearing at this time.
Okay. If there are no other questions, we'll call that question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstaining, seven zero zero.
That is all that I have, thank you.
This is the Waste Water Treatment Bond that we discussed recently with Sarita, and just making sure everybody knows that we're not just loading stuff, not for you folks, because I'm sure you're aware, but for the audience that may or may not be watching us tonight, so that they have a better understanding that we're not just floating money around.
We're just not doing nine million dollars.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, you know, but we did have a long, nice discussion about Waste Water Treatment and all those good things, including the demonstration of the toilet paper and the flushable wipes.
Always fascinating.
All that wonderful stuff, thank you very much. Any other questions or comments from the council at this point?
Are we about to finish? I just wanted to be able to reiterate, thank you to the department heads, too, and also thank you to Eileen and Paul, obviously, we've said this every year, they make our job, I don't want to say easy, but easier, and I appreciate that personally.
I certainly agree with that, any other comments that people want to make?
I concur with Council, I have to Mr. Chairman.
Bless you.
Bless you.
Okay, I think that finishes the meeting information that we needed to cover tonight.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made by Bill, seconded by Barb to adjourn, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining, seven zero zero, thank you very much for coming out, folks, we appreciate it. There could have been questions that you would have needed to answer.